Council Agenda, Township Precipity Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting on March 2nd, 2021. Introduction, Posting of Notice, Adequate Notice to this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law. By filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 18th, 2020. Whereas remain posted since that day, a legal notice appeared in the daily record in the Newark Star Ledger on December 22nd, 2020. Was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers on December 18th, 2020. Note, council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays. And are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net. If I may ask everyone to stand up for the flag salute, please, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the mayor, mayor?
Thank you, thank you clerk. Please join me in the pledge to our colors. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. Thank you clerk.
Thank you mayor. Okay, now I'll go ahead and get into the roll call. Mr. Carriffy?
Here.
Here.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Yeah.
Okay, also present are Mayor Michael Soriano, Business Administrator Frederick Carr, Township Attorney Jim Lott, and Township CFO Juan Uribe. With that being said, Council President, we have a quorum, may I please begin?
Please do.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, March 16th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m., that's the regular meeting, April 6th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. is the agenda meeting. We have the approval of minutes there for next meeting. Moving along to the presentations and reports, mayor?
Mr. Council President and clerk, I see that there are four pretty heavy items on the agenda for closed session. So I have nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you mayor, moving on to Township Council, I turn it over to Council President DiPiero.
I have nothing to report, what's any other council members do?
I have one thing on behalf of the library, but I can do that under committee's report. I know sometimes we flip back and forth. You just tell me when and I'll, I've got my paragraph here.
Okay, we can do that under committees, Council Member Peterson, no other member from council? Okay, seeing none, thank you Council President DePiero, Township Attorney? Township Attorney? Jim, you're on mute.
Is that better clerk?
Yeah, much better.
I'm sorry, as I said, we've drafted two Highlands ordinances. One is the Highlands Referral Ordinance, the other is the Highlands Exemption Ordinance. Scheduled for introduction on the 16th, we have a public presentation. That will be made to mayor and council as well as the public on the effect of those ordinances. And we've also drafted a form of ordinance with respect to the new DEP storm requirement. That was circulated again last week to the township engineer, we had a couple of like ordinance had been drafted. And that should be ready for introduction on the 16th as well. And then I have four matters for closed session as indicated on the agenda.
Mr. Lott, the presentation on the 16th on the Highlands, is that going to be from you guys or are we going to have someone else presenting?
So that'll be myself and student, how do the township plan? And with respect to stormwater, I need to talk to Justin, the township engineer. It will either be he or perhaps the township's stormwater consultant.
So we'll have two presentations on for next meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, I will make sure we put those on the agenda, thank you. Moving on to the Business Administrator Fred Carr?
Thank you, Khaled, following the major, major's lead with all those things we're going to talk about enclosed, I have no report.
Thank you Fred, all right, moving along to Township Offices and Committees, that is your cue, Council Member Peterson?
Wonderful. The Board of Trustees of the Precipity Troy Hills Public Library are very pleased to announce that Melissa Kuzma has been selected as the new library director, following the retirement of Jane Beeline. Melissa, currently the Director of the East Brunswick Public Library, has worked at several different public library systems as well as working for two national library vendors. She will begin work at the library on April 5th and is excited to be part of the planning and construction of a new Lake Hiawatha Branch Library, among other projects. So if anybody sees Melissa around, please welcome her to our town as our new library director, thank you.
Thank you Council Member Peterson, anyone else for Township Officers or Committees? All right, seeing none, we're moving along to the engineering report. So Green Bank Road Safety and Improvements Project, the project is complete except for the Gilderail replacement coordination with the underground. The utility company is ongoing and a new guide rail, guide rail will be installed once underground utilities are moved. No council action required, Simpson Avenue retaining wall project, Simpson Avenue retaining wall project is substantially complete, is substantially completion. All work will be completed once the weather improves, no council action required. Veterans Park Culvert Replacement Project, construction started on the Veterans Park Culvert Replacement Project. The new culvert footings have been constructed and the concrete box is ready to be delivered. Work is on hold until the weather improves, we anticipate work starting again in mid-March, no council action required. Mount Tabor Street Improvement Phase 5, work on the Mount Tabor Street Improvement Phase 5 project has stopped due to the weather. Construction will start again in the spring, no council action required. Mount Tabor Street Improvement Phase 6, the Mount Tabor Street Improvement Phase 6 project was bid in February and is on the agenda for award. This project is for the next phase of improvements in the Mount Tabor section of town. Construction activities are planned to begin in late May and will continue through the beginning of October. Resolution will need to be adopted by Township Council. Plan 21 Road Resurfacing Curb and Sidewalk Program. The annual road resurfacing curb and sidewalk project is out forbidden, a recommendation of award will be requested in the April council meeting. Attentive list of streets has been prepared but will not be finalized until evaluation has been made in mid-March. Construction activities are planned to begin in late June and will continue through the beginning of October, no council action required. Various Culvert Repair Street Project, the project of repair seven culverts is out forbidden, a recommendation of award will be requested at the April council meeting. Construction activities are planned to begin in July and will continue through the beginning of November, no council action required. Roadway Design Projects, the following projects are in final design and we anticipate bidding as follows. Edwards Road Improvements, April 2021, Baldwin Road Pedestrian Accessibility Improvements, April 2021. Puttingstone Heights Road Improvements, May 2021. These projects will be constructed later this year, no council action required. Community Rating Systems CRS Program, we continue to, we continue to work with our consultant and NJDEP to get back to the CRS program. This program provides discounts on flood insurance policies based on a level of activities in which township participates. The work will continue through at least the end of this year, no council action required. Stormwater Management Ordinance Provisions, changes are needed to our stormwater ordinances as part of our NJDEP Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System General Permit. The provisions will bring our ordinances in compliance with recent NJDEP amendments that modify the definition of a major development and incorporate a requirement for green infrastructure technologies and require annual inspection and reporting of public and private stormwater management basements. An ordinance will need to be adopted by Township Council. Correspondence none, moving on to bids taken, January 28th, 21, wealth 14 Emergency Generator. February 4th, 21, one new 2021 chassis cap, 22,000 pound GBW with crane reinforced utility service body. Wow. February 10th, 2021, Lake Hiawatha Water Main Replacement Phase 1 Rebid. February 11th, 2021, one new 2021 Dusen Portable Power Air Compressor with running gear and accessories for proxy forestry. February 18th, 2021, reconstruction of various streets in Mount Tabor Phase 6. To be taken, March 4th, 2021, Baldwin Road Sanitary Sewer Modifications, March 10th, 2021, 2021 Road Resurfacing Curb and Sidewalk Program. March 11th, 2021, repair of seven Precipity Troy Hills Bridges. Quotations, proposals, qualifications, none. Moving on to the public hearing, at this time I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion, Grignani?
Second, Harvey.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Mr. McCarthy? Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson? Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
All right, with that being said, the floor will be open to any residents that would like to address the Council of the Administration. Just a brief reminder to all the residents that this is not a question and answer session. Rather than you will have five minutes to speak on any matter you'd like. Thereafter, either the Council or the Administration will address your questions if they need to be addressed. With that being said, I have a Bob and Pat Venezia on with their hands up, let's please unmute them.
It's just Bob. Hi. When the 39% increase in water and sewer rates were originally debated, one of the reasons given to justify the increase was that Precipity rates were the third lowest in Morris County. Now that the 39% increase is showing up in our utility bills, where do Precipity's water and sewer rates rank in the county today? I realize you probably don't have this precise information on hand tonight, but I think it'd be reasonable to expect an answer when the council meets again in a couple of weeks, so thank you, that's it for me.
Thank you Bob. Let's go ahead and mute Bob, moving along is next is Nick Homiak who has his hand up, let's please unmute Nick.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you Nick, how you doing?
Okay. I was wondering, I'm glad to see that the Highlands is finally moving along. This all began actually in 2009, 2010. So I have to thank Mayor Soriano again for moving us along with this. But the stormwater regulations that have changed, now these new housing projects for the affordable housing responsibility, are they subject to these updates? And is it possible to have the developers' proposals for the stormwater referred to a Highland scrutiny even though they're exempt for the purpose only to make sure that the stormwater regulations are absolutely up to the latest updates and the science? So if I can get an answer for that, I believe this, a municipality does have the right to appeal to different state agencies in particular inappropriate circumstances. So I was wondering whether, once again, these affordable housing projects, or in the name of affordable housing, can be referred to the Highlands? And are they subject to the highest degree of stormwater regulations now being implemented by the state?
Thank you, thank you Nick, let's go ahead and mute Nick please.
So Council President? Council President?
Hi.
I'll have to take a look at the time of application that were made in various affordable housing projects that are pending. The general rule is, is that if you've applied before the change of law, you're protected from the new, the new stormwater requirements. But I'd have to take a look to see what applications are pending.
Just for clarification, what you, what I think you mean is, when they, when they apply to the Planning Board or the Board of Adjustments?
That's, that's correct, Council President, yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, you don't have to check, I know. At the time when their application is active, whatever stormwater management regulations apply at that time, they have to meet.
That's correct. And I don't know exactly what applications are pending, I know that Stanbury filed this week. Or actually, I think they actually, I think they actually filed last week. And that's the only application that I'm aware of, I don't know if there are other applications that are pending, but I, I will check tomorrow.
GlaxoSmithKline is on the planning board agenda for next Monday.
Okay, so they've, they've obviously filed also, right?
Okay, thank you. I don't believe we have any other participants, let's just check one last time. Okay, we have no other participants, so seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani? Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is closed, I'm moving along to ordinances. There are a few ordinances under introduction and under the second reading and public hearing, nothing is for action tonight. So I ask you to just take a minute, just to review those before we move on. Do we have any questions?
This is strictly for the ordinances?
Just for the ordinances.
Okay.
Okay, seeing none, moving along. Okay, so now we're going to go non-consent, we don't have resolutions. Moving along to the consent, I ask you to just take a minute to review the items on the consent agenda, please.
Item number one. Cancellation of 3.5 million. Are we really canceling, putting 5% of this back into our budget, which is what you normally budget for a bond ordinance, or is it the whole, whole 3.5 million?
Council President, it's the 3.5 million which we set aside and bonded. We received a grant, if you remember, you know, a few years ago, from B, their match. We've received an extension of one more year, last year, this year or late last year, DEP asked us, will we fix, will we build this this year and complete this project this year? Since we have not even gone out for bid, I indicated that we would be unable to do so. And as part of that, there's no reason to have three and a half million dollars of funded debt sitting on the books if we're not going to use it this year.
I don't understand, was this a capital improvement?
Yes, this would have been a capital improvement with a match from Green Acres.
Yeah, but capital improvements, we only, we only budget 5%.
That's correct, but this is the funded amount for the entire order. There's five, so the 5% was part of this, but you, but you, but you passed the board, you know, it's an ordinance to fund the whole amount.
Well, we bonded for the entire amount?
Yes, sir, it was a funded.
We've never done that. That does not make any sense, as a matter of fact, if we put out for a bond like that, a bond the whole amount and don't spend it, that's arbitrage, that's illegal.
It's from a capital ordinance in 2019.
And we bonded the whole amount? This does not make any sense to me.
Wasn't this for the cricket field?
Yes ma'am.
Still, still, when we put out for capital improvement in our budget, we, even if the council approves three and a half million dollar expenditure, okay? For, for a, for a capital expenditure, we put 5% in the budget. Not three and a half million dollars in the budget.
It's a.
Until the.
Funded improvement.
We don't borrow the money until the project begins.
Sorry?
Do we borrow this money?
That was my question, apparently, according to Fred, we borrowed the money and never spent it. I know, that's very, very unusual, in fact, that's very wrong.
It's an unexpended balance in the amount, in the, from the capital ordinance of 19. So whether we fully borrowed this money as part of our ordinance last year when we reborrowed that, I would have to go back and check that.
What's the status of the cricket field project?
Well, unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to fix it this year. So the process is that we received, we went out in 19, fully funded an ordinance in intention, building this cricket field. We also received a grant from Green Acres, which is very, it has a timeline on it. They asked if we're going to fix it this year and the answer was, of course, we can't do that because we haven't, we haven't decided on exactly what we want to build, where we want to build it, what those amenities look like, other than that it's a cricket slash multipurpose field. And, and you know, are we prepared to spend seven million dollars when we don't even know what it looks like? And the answer is no.
My understanding was that that location off of South Beavik Road for the cricket field was not satisfactory, we abandoned that. And I think the mayor was proposing that we build a cricket field on a null road, on the new 30 acres we have up there.
But we need the land first.
Well, I still think there's a question about why this was fully funded, right?
Absolutely, I, I, we've never done that before.
Yeah. So are we saying we're not going to use these funds anymore for the cricket field?
Correct.
Okay.
The purpose of it is, you know, I have no problem with having debt or having capital, outstanding capital ordinances, because it goes to our, our debt service, if you will, or it goes to our debt amount and things like that. But if we're not going to use it and we have other items that the council needs to address this year in their budget, for instance, there's a, we need about three million dollars if we're going to fund the match for the library. Okay? If we're going to do repairs like we talked about a few weeks ago with regards to Crasston Farms, you know, we're going to have to bond another 500,000, give or take, depending on whether or not we receive money from Morris County to make those improvements to our property out on Crasston Farm.
So did this decision, because this decision functionally canceled the cricket field project for the time being?
For this year, yeah. Doesn't cancel forever, but we had to use the Green Acres money this year, it was use or lose, and we would be, we were unable to do that. I mean, fully, fully go out, decide what the cricket field or multipurpose field is going to be, bid it, have it finished by the end of this year. Not going to happen. So we had to turn the money back, Green Acres was pretty clear last, have you had, you had a year extension already? Because, you know, there's, it's a competitive grant, as we all know, and people are lined up to get the money and we're holding it from somebody else. So we were forced to turn.
It's like a shame though, we had it in our hands and now the answer is we have to give it back because we didn't move on it.
Correct.
Well, actually, we have.
I hate doing it as much as you do.
That we didn't move on it, it's that we couldn't get land for it.
We believed that we could when we applied for the grant in the first place.
Yes, we did.
So that, I think there's explanation.
Yeah.
Well, it's not that, I mean, we, we borrowed funds as well, right?
We just have a capital ordinance, we fund, we have a capital ordinance that this money is, we're canceling the unfunded balance of the capital improvement. I'll double check to see if this capital improvement ordinance was rolled into our bonding from last year or not.
Okay.
I don't know if Juan has that answer or not, but we'll have a, we'll have it clean come the 16th. But there's no reason to borrow money or have a funded ordinance if you're not going to use it.
Agreed.
We have other, we have other things that have more stressing, I mean, right now, we have the money for the library, from the library. We know that we're building a new library, we've obligated, the council passed a resolution last year, authorizing the application and agreeing to match the state library funding that we received for two, almost three million dollars. We need to move, move forward on the projects that we know it's going to happen, you know, this year, not things that we hope to happen this year.
Okay.
Because we don't have land, you don't have land, you can't build a cricket field.
Right, all right, we've, we got the answer for that. Item number three. Is that simply because the contract is, the company's issued a new name?
Yes.
It's the same person, just the company's changed names.
Correct, if you go to the resolution council president, you'll see that we appointed him initially under the old name, they had a name change, he branched off on his own. Now we just, all the paperwork on the business, business certificate matches.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Number seven.
Yes, sir, so that would be the continuation of our sustainable New Jersey, looking at the.
I know what it is, I know what it is, specifically my question is that by approving this, we're not, what's not in there, I hope, is an attempt to switch all residents of Precipity over to a a low-cost energy provider?
That's no, sir, that's the, that's the energy aggregation opportunity and this is not absolutely that.
That's not in this, okay.
This is, this is just.
Okay.
Nope.
Thank you.
This is more, this is more solar power at the sewer plant, continuation of that.
Council President, I have a question on the moving the soil, did we look at that concerning, has there been any discussion on the hours of operations for moving soil off of these four projects?
Are we going to do that in closed session, Jim, or are we going to do it now?
No, that's on for a closed session, we have that on for closed session.
That's correct, that's off a closed session, there was a memo circulated also. Council, did you get the memo?
The memo was forwarded to council a few days ago.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Did everybody get it?
Yeah, I thought that was just for Atlanta. But.
No, they're all, they're all valid as part of that conversation. You got to be able to talk about all four of them, really.
Correct. Any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Applications, none, approval of payroll and bills list, CFO Juan Uribe recommends authorization for payment. One authorizes payment of the March 5th, 2021 regular payroll estimated at $1,650,000. And two, payment of bills from bachelor list of March 1st, 21 through March 3rd, 21, estimate totaling $2,266,503.19. Can I please have a motion to approve the authorization?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call Mr. Carriffy?
Yeah.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, at this time we're going to go on to closed session, for any members of the public, you know, anticipate any action after the closed session, so if you want to sign off, you can, am I correct in saying that, Jim?
That's correct.
Thank you. So with that being said, going on to executive session, resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege information on a Phillips complaint, attorney-client privilege information pending litigation for if you want versus Township Precipity Troy Hills, attorney-client privilege information, Grand Mountain Times Association, attorney-client privilege information on the Stroud Moving Permit, Park Precipity. Right as minutes will be kept and once the matter involving the confidentiality of those, of those of, of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved, Township Council, Township Precipity Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn it to closed session, please.
Second.
Second, McCarthy.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call Mr. Carriffy?
Yeah.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero, sorry, I got your last, Mr. Carriffy, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Uh, can you please adjourn into closed session? Please have a motion to reconvene and to open session.
Motion, Grignani?
Second.
McCarthy.
Okay, motion made, Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Cariffy, um, Mr. Cariffy's gone. Ms. Ms. Grignani?
Here, yes.
Uh, Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson? I, I think it's a yes, and Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a, a motion to end the meeting, please, to adjourn?
Motion, Grignani. Second, McCarthy.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson? Okay, all right, yeah, we're barely there, but we're there, and Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
All right, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and everybody have a great night.
Good night, have a good time. Have a good trip, Mike, have a safe one.
Good, Mike, good.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.